...of a committee of the whole. Ms. Chenoweth?
Thank you. Um, this is the meeting of the committee of the whole. Could I ask the clerk to please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Huth? Ms. Pratt?
Present.
Mr. Otto?
Present.
Mr. Whalen? Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Here.
I've been notified that, um, Mr. Whalen called in and he's ill for the evening, so if the clerk could note that he is, uh, has an excused absence. Is there any additions to the agenda or a staff report? Additions to the agenda? Council members? Committee members? Staff report? On there.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, recognize some visitors from Shandong Province in China. You can see them in the back row there. They're observing, uh, Urbana local government in action. They have been here for, I guess, about six months or towards the end of a six-month program and they've been, uh, learning about, uh, how local government and government in general is run here in the United States, so, welcome.
Welcome to you. Thank you. Um, next, I'll, um, is there a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting?
Move approval.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion or changes committee members would like to make? If none, all those in favor of, uh, ratifying the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. Um, members of the public, if you'd like to have input to the committee, uh, we have input at the beginning of our meeting and if you just fill out one of these slips, which is in the back of the room, and you bring it over to our city clerk, uh, we will give you an opportunity to speak, uh, before the committee. And first, we have, taking them in order here, Elizabeth Simpson of 210 South Grove Street.
I'm here to represent a conference and a group of people called Liberation Education. This group of people is, um, an anti-oppression group who formed in response to, uh, a study group studying history, um, particularly of public education in America. Recently, we've become quite concerned with how public education in regard to other forms of education are orchestrated and so have created a series of three conferences, the first of which is this Saturday, November 15th, 10 to 2, at the Illinois Disciples Foundation on Springfield Street. This first conference will be addressing race and education, particularly focusing again on the history of public schools in America, local, local to Champaign and Urbana, responses to trouble in public schools, and community-based initiatives that have tried to address the needs of students, and then also looking to create a collaboration between public school teachers, university faculty, and students, as well as community members. Again, this is the first of a series of three. There will be another one here in Champaign-Urbana in probably February, and then a third, actually, in Durham, North Carolina. So I do invite you, city council members and staff, as well as anyone participating via cable, to come to this event this Saturday, November 15th, 10 to 2, at the Illinois Disciple Foundation. And if you have any questions, you can contact us at liberationeducation@yahoo.com, or by calling 384-0299. And that is on these flyers I've given to you, and anyone who's present, I also have flyers available for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any questions, by the way? But... And it's true that this workshop is providing professional development credit to schoolteachers in the area.
Right. So any teachers who need to get CPDUs to, for their recertification, those will be available. And also lunch will be provided. There is a fee, and if that's a problem for anyone, um, we can take care of that. The fee is $25, $10 low income, but again, if that's an inhibiting factor, please get in touch with us and we'll make it possible because we want everyone to be there.
Thanks. Next, we'll hear from Daniel Luerdt, uh, from 310 North Bucy Avenue, apartment number four. Daniel?
I chose not to speak.
Oh. Um, in support of, uh, I believe the ordinance, this refers to the ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for preliminary feasibility study of electrical utility acquisition, which is a mouthful. It refers to, uh, studying the feasibility of a electric utility acquisition on the municipal level. All right. Next, we have, uh, John Paul Schmidt from the Green Party, representing the Green Party on the topic of municipal utilities ordinance. John Paul?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I was here before you a couple weeks ago talking about why we support, uh, municipal utilities, so I won't go over that again. I just want to say that, uh, we support the ordinance to, uh, form the study with, uh, the City of Champaign and the University to, uh, establish a municipal utility, and even if the cities ultimately decide not to establish a utility, I think, uh, it's clear that the cities have a lot of complaints with, uh, Illinois Power in regards to service and other matters that, regardless of how this entire sale works out, are going to have to be addressed. And by going ahead with this survey, or with this study, even if you don't buy the utility, you'll have some sort of solid factual basis that you can take into your negotiations with Illinois Power, and so you'll benefit, uh, or the cities will benefit either way. Uh, thank you.
Any questions for John Paul? There are no questions? Thank you, John Paul. Um, next, we'll hear from Ralph Langenheim of 401 West Vermont on the feasibility study of electric utility acquisition.
I really don't feel up to a long speech in support of the, uh, feasibility study. However, given the SARI experience we've had with remote control of our utilities over the past few years, and the prospect of no local control in the immediate future, a feasibility study for municipal distribution system seems most prudent. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Ms. Langenheim? If there are none, thank you. Uh, next, we'll hear from Al Weiss of 705 South Cedar Street in Urbana, on the topic of municipal electric utility study. Go ahead, Al.
Hi, I spoke with you at great length, uh, two weeks ago, so I won't, uh, add anything more to that. I just want to add my voice to the other people who have spoken today in support of the, and do I have to read the whole thing?
No.
The feasibility study.
Yes.
And electric municipal utility. So I think it's a, it's a great idea, and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, last, we'll hear from George Gore of 702 West Washington Street, uh, on the same topic, power plant acquisition study.
Um, I was interested in a little bit more information. I may have missed, there was apparently a discussion last week, so I may have missed some information.
There'll be more, there'll be a, uh, discussion during the ordinance section, which will be next.
Okay. Uh, one of the things I was thinking about was, in terms of acquisition, acquisition's a very expensive prospect, um, and one of the alternatives to consider, perhaps, uh, the last city that I lived in down near Springfield actually purchased the power from various, well, actually down there, they have a municipal plant. But they would purchase the power and then resell it to the residents, uh, so that you don't actually have to purchase and operate a power plant. All you have to do is run the administration of the, the billing system essentially, um, which would be a much cheaper way of getting started in the business. Uh, another, and even cheaper than building a new power plant is obviously conserving and using energy more efficiently, and especially if that energy, uh, is produced outside of the county, it would actually keep money within this region. Um, so, if, if the city is actually buying and selling power, then you would have control over creating energy efficiency programs within the community. Um, and I guess the other question that I had was where the potential plants are located that might be available for sale?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, but, but we can certainly ask during, when we discuss the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay?
That's it.
Thanks, George. Is there anyone else who's here to speak before the committee this evening? If not, uh, we'll go on to, uh, our regular business, and, uh, first is ordinance number 2003 dash, uh, dash 11 dash 131, and that's the ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for preliminary feasibility study of electricity utility acquisition. I believe we're hearing from Legal?
Yes. Um, you'll see in your packet, there's a copy of this, um, of the proposed intergovernmental agreement. Uh, I should say that, uh, that, uh, there will be, we're anticipating some tweaks on this. The language about termination of the agreement is a little bit unclear, as we met about it this, uh, this afternoon with Champaign and the University to review it. So we expect some tweaks in that regard. The basic deal is a three-way deal between the City of Urbana-Champaign and the University of Illinois, the focus being to look at, or to look into, um, the feasibility of acquiring the electric distribution system in the local communities. So we're not talking about, uh, about, um, transmission system, that is, kind of, long-distance transport of electricity, nor are we looking at, um, the possibility of generating or anything like that. It's not a business that we would be equipped to get into. It's just way, way over our heads. What we'd be looking at is acquiring just the local distribution system, uh, as well as looking at other alternatives. Uh, those alternatives could include aggregation of residential customers, which is one of the speakers, uh, what one of the speakers tonight here mentioned, uh, as well as a review of the IP system needs in our local communities, in the context of the informal complaint that we've already got filed with the Illinois Commerce Commission. You'll note that the agreement that's in the packet refers to an Exhibit A. That Exhibit A would be the request for proposals that would be issued pursuant to this agreement. That's in the drafting process. Uh, we met about it this afternoon. There are some tweaks that need to be done on that yet, and that will be included in the packet, uh, and the materials for next week when the council is called upon to actually act on this, if forwarded from tonight. The scope of the, pardon me, the amount of the agreement is $100,000 to be split equally three ways between the, uh, the three parties, the City of Champaign, Urbana, and the University. I believe that Champaign would be the lead agency on this thing. They, uh, they would provide the staffing and, uh, and the, basically the lead on the process of reviewing this. It's my understanding as well that the City of Champaign has already authorized their city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, the exact nature or the exact, uh, language of the agreement was not anything that was specified. He was just given kind of broad authority to go ahead and enter this. So, uh, once we have this here, and I believe as well that the University has already gotten authority for doing it, uh, once we have it here, then we are ready to move forward to the next step.
Mr. Walden, did you want to add anything?
Only that, uh, another component of this will follow, and that's a budget amendment. Uh, and, uh, that will be coming in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Pratt?
I'm sorry, if you could just clarify, do you say a budget amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what will the source of funds be? Is this from, uh, general, from, um, reserves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from committee, committee members? Ms. Chenoweth?
There are a couple of things I want to mention, I hope they're taken into consideration. You know, several years ago, when, uh, the electricity was deregulated, uh, we got a, I think it was a 15% reduction in the rates. Okay? And at that time, the premise was that there'll be other companies coming in to compete with Illinois Power to, uh, reduce the rates even further, but that didn't happen. And, you know, while you're doing a feasibility study, you might want to know why, why. However, there will be a rate increase, you know, whether the city and the university and everybody else takes it over, or a new company comes in and takes, takes it over, there will be a rate increase. So hopefully, the, uh, Citizen Utility Board and the ICC will make sure that, uh, you know, the rates aren't too high. Um, and so also, when we look at, uh, at Exelon, it has a good production, transmission, and distribution system, and they're good at what they do. Well, Dinerji and Illinois Power, they didn't have the know-how about the nuclear power operational capacity. Hopefully, this, this feasibility study will indicate whether or not that we're going to have the capabilities of, uh, you know, taking over the distribution system. And also, we have to take into account the high fixed costs for such an adventure. You know, a local distribution system, and, uh, you, you need to make sure you have a certain number of customers to pay for the high fixed costs, uh, before you could, uh, lower the rates. So I'm wondering that, uh, is this going to be taken care of too, when, when we do the feasibility study?
Those are all, those are all very good points, and certainly, we need some help in, in analyzing the financial feasibility of this, and I'm certain they're going to look at, uh, what the risks are, including how much debt we could handle relative to the benefit we might gain in stable rates. That's part of the deal.
I do have one other comment about the utility issues in general, particularly the legislation in Springfield. Their press release is issued, I believe, this afternoon, uh, that may, if you didn't listen carefully enough, may have, um, lulled you into thinking that things were looking pretty good all of a sudden with the legislation. The, uh, the announcement is that Exelon, in its, uh, in its bid for this legislative proposal in Springfield, had dropped its request for rate hikes, uh, but you have to listen carefully, the, the request for rate hikes was dropped only as to the Commonwealth-Eddison customer areas.
Mm-hmm.
It looks not dropped, apparently, with respect to the Illinois Power areas. I wanted to make sure that people who had heard that were, had that called to their attention.
Uh, I, I want to add to that, that actually, um, while we study the issue of municipal utility, it's really important that members of the public who may be watching this, um, who I know from receiving emails and phone calls in, in, uh, reaction to an email that was sent out by Laura Huth and forwarded by myself and other council members, that people are putting the pressure on the representatives about rate hikes and fast-tracking of legislation, and it is paying off, but it's important that they hear from downstate, um, customers, and not just Chicago-area customers, so that, uh, so that they understand that people in the downstate are not going to, to put up with, uh, these kind of rate hikes. And any other questions that, uh, committee members had for staff? If not, a motion would be in order?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
May.
Ms. Wyman, and then Ms. Otto.
Just, uh, I, I think this is a great idea. I think it seems like the pendulum is, is, uh, on its way back to, to looking, uh, to supporting, uh, as far as community interests go, um, not-for-profits, that is, in this case, government, um, taking over issues that affect the public interest and that I think are better left often to those who aren't seeking quick, uh, uh, get-rich-quick profits, um, like some of the, uh, Illinois Power, Dinerji, um, and other sorts of for-profit electric companies. And so I think this is a good idea. Whether or not it ends up panning out that the, uh, cities of Champaign-Urbana and the University of Illinois end up, um, going in together to, uh, to acquiring the electric distribution system for the area, uh, I guess remains to be seen, but I think it's a good idea to explore, and similar to issues, uh, like air quality, like recycling, like some of the other areas where government or not-for-profits, um, make sure that the, the best interests of the community are involved. I think this is, this also is a good idea just to, uh, to explore further, and appreciate staff's work on this issue.
Ms. Otto?
Yeah. Um, I'd just like to say I'm extremely, uh, pleased that we're moving this. It seems like it's still a fluid situation with, uh, things changing rapidly, um, and, you know, while it's encouraging that they seem to be withdrawing at least part of their rate hike request, there's still a lot of, uh, dangers out there. Uh, you know, the whole reason they started down this track was of seeking an expedited review that cut short what the Illinois Commerce Commission could look at, and trying to seek the rate hike ahead of time. It's only logical to assume that if it had gotten the full review, uh, the rate hike, uh, wouldn't be justified. And while it looks, at least today, although nobody knows how it will look tomorrow, so the legislature is, is not going to pass, uh, the requests that Exelon, Illinois Power, uh, have made, I was really struck by Illinois Power representatives saying, "Well, even if this legislation doesn't pass, uh, the Illinois Commerce Commission has gotten the message, and, uh, we'll go ahead and get the rate hike anyways," uh, because they understand that, uh, this has to happen. And, um, it, it's extremely frustrating to me when I think about this and the way that it's attempting to be sold, this rate hike, uh, to the public. They talk about it as a jobs, uh, protection act. It's not going to create any new jobs, but they're talking about taking $2 billion out of central Illinois communities, and, um, they're not being accompanied by additional service guarantees or any positive benefit to the public. You can't take $2 billion out of our communities and replace it with nothing, uh, put it in the pockets of the utilities, and expect that to create jobs. That's going to destroy jobs. It has to have an impact, and it has to have a negative impact on, uh, small businessmen, on, uh, people who live in central Illinois, and also, uh, you know, the businesses, uh, that serve those people. You just, you can't take that much money out of these communities, uh, many of which are in much more dire economic straits than, uh, Champaign-Urbana are. The thing that, I guess it really seems to me is, is Illinois Power, uh, in spite of backing off the legislative approach, uh, seems to have confidence that they can do this, that they can extract $2 billion in cash from our pockets, uh, whether we like it or not, and it seems to me that that's a form of mugging when it comes right down to it. Take money from people against their will and provide them with nothing in return. So, I'm pleased that, uh, we're taking this step. We've had a number of problems with Illinois Power in the past. We've tried to talk with them, uh, most recently about the service and reliability problems, and, uh, I very sincerely ask them to please, you know, start working more constructively in the community to address these things, because the next step was going to be looking at exactly what we're looking at tonight, uh, which is putting together a municipal utility. And I'm tired of playing defense and constantly trying to, uh, protect ourselves from our trees being cut down, from service outages, from rate hikes, and I feel very good that finally we're going on the offense, and we're looking at what can we positively do to take control of the situation and assure, uh, reliable service, uh, that is at a reasonable rate and is responsive to the community. And, um, I don't know what we're going to find on this study, um, but, uh, I'm glad we're doing it, and I think it's going to be money very well spent.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Mayor?
Yeah, just to, uh, echo some support for the other comments, uh, I think this is a necessary step. Uh, we really need to find out what, um, uh, how feasible it is to get control of our own destiny as far as, uh, our electric service is concerned. Taking a look at some of the statistics, if these are right from the Chicago Tribune over the weekend, it shows, uh, what happens when you've got a situation like Exelon as a parent corporation and a Commonwealth Edison as the subsidiary corporation with locked-in, um, power contracts between the, the parent and the subsidiary. Says that last year, ComEd paid an average of $42.16 per megawatt hour, and if they were on the open mark, ComEd, so ComEd's locked into buying that, at that price from, uh, Exelon, uh, but if they were able to go out on the open market, they could have paid an average of $26.60. Uh, so the amount that they were paying, um, is about 60% higher than they could have on the open market. And this goes to, since the deregulation of the power companies, uh, the generation portion is, uh, non-regulated, and the distribution portion, ComEd, is regulated. So while the regulated utility has a certain regulated profit, the unregulated utility doesn't have any cap on profits. So this contract rate goes into the bottom line of Exelon, and who pays the bill? Uh, as we've seen, that's been, uh, the rate payers. So, uh, it, it's great to see that Exelon is pulling part of its proposal, um, for rate hikes, uh, but that doesn't include us. Well, if it's, if it's good enough to pull those, uh, for Exelon, why isn't it good enough to pull it for us? Why should we be, um, on the line, on the hook to pay higher electric rates when nobody else in the state is on the same hook? Uh, the article in the Tribune further goes to say, further goes on to say that, uh, you know, with the falling electricity prices, a freeze, which would just continue the rate, uh, that we have right now, uh, would, um, end up being, end up meaning that we would continue to pay above-market prices, even if the prices are frozen. Well, they're not asking that prices be frozen, they're asking for an increase. So they're asking for more than that. And, um, they, this article, uh, estimates that, uh, Illinois Power customers could pay an additional $500 million annually. Well, [laughing] well, that's, uh, that's just coming out of your pocket and mine. And, um, so, uh, I think it's essential that we go ahead with, uh, this feasibility study and, uh, see if we can, uh, as I say, be the masters of our own destiny as far as our power sources are concerned.
Any other committee members? I have two questions that occurred to me in this discussion. One is the, um, timeline for the agreement, what kind, or for the study itself. What do you anticipate being the, the timeline for the study? And my second question is, will there be opportunities for public input during that study, and what do they look like?
I'm sorry, I missed a second.
The, just, will there be opportunities for public input? I mean, we've, we've seen a number of members of the public, uh, citizens of Urbana, come and speak to us with a number of ideas, and I want, I would like the, um, to know if, if they're going to have the opportunity to share those ideas with those conducting the feasibility study, and if so, how would they go about doing that?
Uh, with regard to the timeline, uh, the first question, we are, uh, reviewing that right now in the context of the draft, uh, request for proposals, and I, I feel more comfortable holding off on answering that question until the council meeting. We do have, it is an accelerated timeline as we see it right now, although, uh, it's, uh, it's true also that, uh, John Rowe of Exelon, when he met with, uh, with the local leaders a week ago, uh, committed to sharing a lot of information with the local communities about their own review of Illinois Power. I suppose that there is a possibility that that could, uh, if it, if they were actually to follow through on that in a genuine and substantive way, uh, there is a possibility that that could be, uh, as useful as a investigation that we would otherwise have to do through our, our own consultant. So we're, we're considering that, trying to see exactly how that might affect the timelines, uh, which is why I'd rather hold off on answering that exactly. With respect to the public input part of it, we've heard a lot of good comments from the public already, and obviously from council members and from various other players in the community. Um, I, I think that, uh, we're trying to pull those concerns into the request for proposals. In terms of what's, what is actually produced, as a result of the request for proposals, my sense is that it really is much more of a technical sort of, a review. What are the systems locally? How are they deficient? What would it take to, to bring them up to speed? Those kinds of questions. So in that aspect of it, I don't really see much room for public input or even for much input from me, once we turn these people loose. In terms of what the actual recommendations would be, and, and obviously what the various courses of action would be, that would be then open to the cities, uh, obviously, that's, that's all, uh, exactly where, uh, we would need the public input and exactly where, uh, the real wrestling for this body and the City of Champaign and the University would be.
Let me ask a follow-up question, then. So, the consultant who would be hired to conduct this feasibility study would be doing two things. One is kind of analyzing existing infrastructure and describing what it would take to be able to distribute our power, um, locally, uh, through, uh, the municipalities, and then the second piece is, will that consultant also be making recommendations for what that structure would look like? Or are they just doing the first at this point?
It would be actually more than that. It would be analyzing the infrastructure, making recommend, looking at what, uh, preliminarily looking at what the options would be and what the ramifications would be of a purchase. For instance, if, if we were to be able to purchase either by consent or by condemnation the local distribution system, what kinds of advantages would there be for the local community from city ownership of the system? What kind of tax advantages would there be? What kind of advantages in terms of economic development? All those kinds of things are things that we would be asking them to look at.
So, so if members of the public are familiar with particular models that perhaps the consultants are familiar with, how would they communicate those ideas to the consultants? I mean, is, is it possible that we could have, um, a, a public I mean, is it possible that we could have a public hearing where our staff would gather and kind of try to organize so that we wouldn't be paying consultants to do that work, organize that information and hand it to the consultants? Or could we have a public hearing where the consultants are present at the hearing to take, take that kind of input? Is that, is that a possibility?
I don't know if we've put money in there for them to appear at public hearings or not, but in a, in a more global sense, this is going to be a very public process because it may be the biggest decision that you'll ever make on this. So, I mean, I just, I imagine it's one that, that would require an awful lot of public discussion and public input at all levels. So I'm sure that we'll, you know, try to provide as many opportunities as we can, but in the scope of work, I don't know where we are as far as paying for them to appear. I don't know if that will happen.
Yeah, I understand the, the issue with that and the expense of consultants sitting through what could be a six-hour public hearing session and whether or not the public actually wants to pay the $200 an hour, whatever that it costs to do that. But, but I think that it might be good for, for us to hold that public hearing and for our own staff to organize those ideas in some way and then for that to be one of the pieces of input that the, that the consultants use. And that way we wouldn't really be increasing the budget for the consultants, but we would be providing an opportunity during the study for the public to have.
We'll find, we will find such an opportunity.
Great. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? All right, if not, I believe that we don't have a motion on the table yet. We do, okay, motion in a second. All those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. Next we have a series of traffic commission items. Standing ovation in the crowd. A series of tra, yeah, because of the traffic commission items. And I do have a question whether or not we're still considering item number A. Is that still on the agenda, Mr. Gray?
The Matthews Avenue portion of A will be postponed.
Okay.
It's put on hold.
Okay, so we'll hear from Public Works and let's go ahead and hear on A through D and then we might be able to take these in omnibus.
At the October Traffic Commission meeting, there were several action items and before you this evening, I'll try to go through those here one at a time. First of all, Central Avenue, there is a recommendation for a curb loading zone in front of the school that is part of the Canaan Baptist Church and this loading zone is at their request and the recommendation by the commission is to support this particular loading zone for drop-off and pickup of people at, the students at the academy, the Canaan Academy. And that's the first action item and I guess I'll stop at this point if there's any questions on that.
Any questions for Mr. Gray on that item? If not, we could hear about the second item.
Okay, second item then is B. And here we're talking about prohibiting parking in two locations. One is on the north side of Florida Avenue, just east of Farrow Road, and this is to better accommodate buses. There's a large bus stop near the Florida House there, so there would be removal of, or I should say, yellow curbing and, which would remove a couple of parking spaces on the north of Florida. Also, on Central Avenue at Griggs Street, part of the recommendation is to make northbound Central a stop and by doing so, the no parking area would be shortened and there'd be addition of two more spaces on Central, which is a good thing because there is the need for more parking in that area for the academy and the church. This again would be on Central Avenue, just south of Griggs Street. So that would become a stop sign for northbound Central Avenue at Griggs. Any questions on those two items?
Any questions on committee members?
On item C, then we're talking about stop signs at Adams and Briar Cliff currently. Those are yield signs. The traffic engineer has analyzed that and knew there should be a stop sign there versus a yield sign at that particular intersection. And as I just mentioned, Central Avenue, again, being a local street, Griggs being a busier through-street, Central Avenue would be stopping for the northbound Central. And lastly, item D is, would be a yield sign at Adams Street in Briar Cliff. And let me get my notes here. This particular Schedule I, this, all the yield signs, and this would be merely a removal of this intersection where it currently has a yield sign and that would be replaced with a stop sign instead and stop signs are a part of Schedule H. I think I've covered all the action items. Again, we received late word today from the university that they would like to pull the loading zone in front of the Uni High School, University Laboratory High School on Matthews Avenue. I can't give any more details, but apparently there's some more discussion going on at this time with the principal there, so this may be coming back to you for consideration.
Okay, so that means that on, we, Central Avenue, Matthews Avenue ordinance, that the Matthews Avenue piece is, is not up for consideration this evening?
Correct. So the draft ordinance, Schedule J of Section 23 dash 172, we would remove, in the parentheses, Matthews Avenue and then under Section I, we would, we would remove the second recommendation of Matthews Avenue from 62 feet north of the centerline of Springfield Avenue to 212 feet of the centerline of Springfield Avenue, et cetera. That'd be for a loading zone, that would be removed at this time.
Okay. Is that all?
This is all, yes.
Do committee members have any questions about any of these ordinances? If not, a, a motion would be in order for, and I think we could take all four of these at once.
I'll move approval with the exception noted by staff regarding Uni High.
We have a motion? There's a motion in a second? Any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And thank you.